I would like to thank people for coming tonight. And Rebecca, particularly thank you for joining us.
Thank you. Thanks for having me.
And look forward to having the opportunity to talk with you. So what we will be doing is going through a set of questions. Each person will have some questions for you and look forward to starting off. I get to start off with the first set of questions. And what are the core values that drive you as an educator? And what core values would you want to see in the staff you hire?
Yeah, okay, that's a great place to start. So I'll say, I'll choose, I'll choose four. I'm debating three versus four, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna split them. So first, I would say equity is an important core value of mine. And I mean that in the sense that as a school system, we have the opportunity to look for what people need to be successful and remove obstacles and barriers to that success. So my goal is to help every student in Westwood be as successful as they can be in our schools. My second core value is a few words together, respect and kindness and empathy. Because I think that that can go a long way. If you approach a situation with the knowledge that you have the choice to be kind, that you can take a minute and think about how the other person is feeling and put yourself in their shoes. And you approach even difficult situations with mutual respect, that can really set the foundation for being able to work together, move forward, and get to a solution that we feel good about. Third, I'll say collaboration. Speaking of moving toward a solution that we feel good about together, it's important to me not to be any kind of a leader in a silo or dictatorial leader. It's really important, I think, in any leadership role, but certainly in a school's leadership role, to recognize the strengths and expertise of those on your team. Know that everybody's bringing something to the table. And give people the space to collaborate in those roles and build on their strengths. And then the last core value that I think I'm bringing with me is maybe implicit in the other three, but it's community. In that when we give people what they need and take away the obstacles that are in their way, in the way of success for them, when we are respectful and kind and thoughtful to one another, and when we collaborate towards making good things happen, that's how we build our community. And that's literally what I think we're here to do. That's a huge part of what school is about for me, so.
Thank you. Just as a follow-up, what are some of the characteristics that you have found consistent among the most effective educators?
Right. So I would say patience. And that is a hard thing to have when you are an educator with a room full of 20 kiddos. But being able to find that reserve and draw on that reserve in yourself and being able to remember that the group in front of you are kiddos and they need you as the adult. Passion for your content area and for sharing that love of learning that, I'm gonna go ahead and say nerdiness, with the kids who are in the class with you. Because if you don't, if you're not excited about what you're teaching, it's very hard to be an effective, effective educator. And then last, I'll say, an understanding of engagement and meeting kids where they are. And the difference between feeling like you're trying to teach something and knowing that you're helping kids learn something. And they could be the same thing, but they're not always the same thing. So recognizing when your students are engaged and how to shift and how to get them engaged when you need to. That's what makes an effective teacher.
Thank you very much. Tony?
Great. So you're currently in Rockland, you're in Braintree and a lot of other districts. So as you think about, Westwood's like, you know, different. So if you think about entering a district that differs from your current past experiences, you know, what challenges do you think that would present? And what strengths could you bring to the table from past experiences?
Yep. So the first step in, in, you know, before even applying for the job and then before coming for an interview, and certainly before coming for a second interview. I've done a lot of research on the town and, you know, talked to people who live here, talked to people who work here, researched everything I can online. I may or may not have watched some game film. Seen you all in action. So certainly getting to know the town and the specifics of Westwood. Because it is not the same as other towns I've worked in. I would venture that any town would expect that unique learning path to making sure that you thoroughly understand the place and the priorities and the needs and the interests. And then as far as what skills I'm bringing, I've talked about this in a couple of settings today, that what I, what I love and what I care about is the teaching and learning. The skill set that I have is to realize efficiencies and help teenager, teenagers, well, teenagers too, but teachers work smarter, not harder. So what I want to do for a school system is to talk with people about what's working well. Talk with people about sticking points and stumbling blocks and how I can remove those, back to the taking away obstacles idea, how I can, how I can help smooth the path to the success that I know we can work towards together. So it's not that people couldn't be successful without those steps, but it's that little, that little step up. I think I have a very good analytical skill set to, to do that and to coach people through having the independence and the latitude to make those decisions as educational leaders, as teachers, even as teenagers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Amanda?
Can you give examples of quality programs and/or educational policies to improve the quality of instruction that you've implemented in another school district? Can you give us examples of programs that were not successful and describe the course of action you took as a result?
Yeah. That is a, for someone with 14 years of curriculum leadership, that's a big question. I'm like, wow, let me tell you. So I'll say that one program that I think is working really well in, one, one published program that I think is working really well in Rockland right now is the math program that we've chosen. And I'm not gonna name it because I'm not trying to sell math books. But I'm, but I'll say that having the faculty come together, evaluate materials, choose a research-based product that we could implement with fidelity. Make sure we had the professional development and the time and the support to do that and then do it. The movement that we've seen in students' math, mathematical thinking, not just like calculation fluency or like, oh, we're doing division of second graders, not, not that. But, but their ability to think about and talk about and wrestle with complex problems and explain why the math does what it does is impressive and a joy to see. And we've started to see the beginnings of that moving state assessment results. And I, my, you know, hope was to see that play out over a number of years to ultimately give students a strong enough foundation in lower mathematics that we could offer, you know, even more advanced coursework at the high school. In Braintree, I did, there's, I guess I have two examples. I did a fair amount of work as the technology director, moving from a pre-one-to-one setting through COVID into a fully one-to-one setting. So for a whole variety of financial reasons, Braintree was not one-to-one when we closed for COVID. And using the, using the, the resources that we had, we had to get to one-to-one because how else are we gonna keep kids engaged in school in that moment? So, so leveraging the programs and subscriptions and software that was available to us to move from a, an entirely in-person centered model to a more flexible model was certainly an adventure. And I feel that the teachers in Braintree and the technology staff did the best we could to collaborate together to make that happen. So this one, I'm gonna say is not, not a success, but it wasn't an end point. When I first became a curriculum director for English and reading, my assistant superintendent charged me with reviewing our early literacy curriculum and, because we hadn't done so in more than 10 years. Braintree has six neighborhood elementary schools, sort of similar to Westwood. Some of the schools are bigger, but the same concept of multiple buildings means sometimes things diverge. And without careful communication and collaboration, say, not reviewing your literacy program for 10 years, things could have diverged. So working with staff from all buildings, taking a year to pilot published materials, we ended up settling on a basal reader that was very good. But it was not everything. And although in, this was in 2011, although the publisher would have you think, oh, it's got phonics, it's got phonemic awareness, it's, it does everything, look, it slices, it dices. It did not. So, you know, I was proud of getting the commonality of moving toward that. And I felt like there were a lot of necessary steps along the way in understanding how we teach foundational reading skills. But that could not be the end point. That was not an acceptable place to land. So it was a long process. And the difficult part, this is always the difficult part in education. You can't just be like, stop the kids for a few years. We need to get it together. So knowing that there were kids moving through reading instruction in a program that we were still trying to bolster up to where it needed to be for them to really be as successful as they could be, that's still, that still hurts a little bit. But I appreciate knowing that the district is still working towards that, so.
Great. Given the stress in the lives of young people today, particularly in the area, the social, academic, financial, and these pressures that they face, how can educators in general, and specifically a superintendent, have an impact on the emotional well-being of these kids?
Yep. So one side of it is modeling and being honest about that we're all humans and that we all have a work-life balance or a school-life balance, and that we all have thoughts and feelings and we have good days and we have not-so-good days. And just making space to be honest about that. It's not something you have to hide. It's not something you have to struggle through alone. And then the other side is empowering your school leaders and your staff to know that that's an important part of education as well. So I would love to see 100% of students scoring in the passing range on an AP exam. I also care deeply about your students in your class being safe and healthy and well and setting realistic goals for themselves with the supports they need to achieve. So, so one level is, is modeling that. And then the other level is making clear to your, your leaders and to your faculty that that's, that's the message for me. I wanna see the high achievement that I know we're capable of, but not at the cost of anyone's mental health. And that means explicit supports and conversations about mental health and social-emotional needs throughout the educational process, not just social-emotional at the elementary level, but also what does social-emotional and mental health look like through middle school when they start to find that stuff cheesy? And then what is, as we move into our NIOSC accreditation, as we talk about what is the vision of the graduate and what are the soft skills that we wanna see our 12th graders leaving with around collaboration, teamwork, self-management? That's, that's all in that realm. So I guess just not neglecting that realm for the academic is, is a huge step.
Okay. And how do you, you know, you have these conversations with, with the faculty?
Yep.
And how do you tell them or work with them to push that down so that the kids actually hear that message?
Yeah. So I think the best tool for ensuring that a mission or a philosophy is making it out into the classroom is the observation and evaluation system. So it has to come through, to some degree, trust and reliability in your leadership team, knowing what areas they're looking for. On the plus side, the state is, recently just revised the Building Leader Educator Evaluation Rubric. And they're in the process of revising the Teacher Educator Evaluation Rubric to focus more explicitly on those areas. So when we go into a classroom, that's literally what we're looking for is how are you engaging all students? How are you supporting all students? How are you consciously aware of the, you know, the social-emotional needs of kids in your class? So I'm not interested in popping into your classroom and being like, that kid looks uncomfortable. I am interested in having conversations with leaders about what they're seeing across their building and how we can support better, making sure that educators understand that message and are sharing that message with kids. And when I'm the one with kids, that's the message I'm sending. I'm not saying, are you scared of MCAS? It's coming up next week, you must feel so stressed. How is that an effective message for any of them? Even the ones for whom it's high stakes. If you're eight, this is a great check on your learning. I'm so excited for you. I can't wait to see what you can do. And that's just a very different message from, we all have to be scared.
Okay. In the last 12 months, could you give us an example of a difficult conversation or question that you navigated, that you would characterize as politically charged? Could you describe the situation, who you involved when you were managing the situation, what you did, and the outcome?
Yep. So I'll choose, we had a challenge to a particular title that was being read in our high school English department. The title was "The Hate U Give." And it does have some mature content. And they were reading it in freshman class. The teachers chose it specifically because it was a great pairing with Romeo and Juliet. We had evidence of excellent student engagement. And the materials that the teachers were using were very carefully balanced and apolitical. If you don't know the book, the book has a main character who's a girl of color. And there are some portions of the book that could end up taken out of context, being mischaracterized as anti-white or anti-police. And so the book has been a lightning rod sometimes on, sometimes in the media, as like one of those titles to avoid. So, so we were using it and we were seeing success with it with students. And teachers felt confident in that. And we had a complaint from a community member, not even from a parent. So this was not someone who had a student in the class that was interacting with it. So the process of the complaint went through the English department head, the high school principal, came to the superintendent's office. I had multiple conversations back and forth with this person. And eventually, we got around to, the person agreed to read the book. And in doing so, their complaint shifted from, how dare you have this anti-police, anti, you know, super racist book in your classes? The complaint shifted very quickly to, well, this book has a lot of swear words in it. And yes, it does. And whether or not that's right for Westwood is not the answer I'm giving right now. But the teachers in our freshman classes in Rockland felt really strongly that this was connecting with kids and we were getting good results from it. And so I said, I'm gonna stand by their choice. They're choosing it for a specific reason. They've thought it through carefully. I mean, to the point that we, talking about the, there's a police shooting in the book. So talking about the police teenager interaction in the book, our school resource officer went to the English classes and talked with the kids, and the kids asked him questions. I mean, I'm, I'm not making it up when I say this was as above-board and broad-reaching in how we think and talk about what we value as a society, as, as it possibly could have been. I'm so proud of how they structured that. The parent eventually got, or the, the community member eventually got to the complaint that he didn't like the language in the book. So then it escalated from me to the superintendent, because that was the last place to go. But it landed in the same place, which was, I landed with him on, we're going to have to agree to disagree. And that's where the superintendent landed with it as well. And the freshman classes continued to use the book. So we did a little more work around making sure parents understood that we were reading it and why we were reading it. And I think that communication in advance is helpful. But yeah, that's, that's my flashpoint situation. And really, it's just about talking all the way through and helping people understand that this wasn't a wild, irresponsible decision. But, but one that was carefully thought out and good for the community. Thank you.
Actually, in answering that question, you've answered my second question, so. Yeah, if that works.
Yeah, sure.
So, yeah.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah. I think you've answered it.
Thank you.
Sorry. No, we're, we're just. It's us, not you.
A town leader's in Westwood have adopted a town policy of respect for diversity, inclusion, and equity. And we as a school committee supported that also. The question is, our school leaders must be champions of inclusion. Have you advocated for diversity, equity, and inclusion among teams or individuals who do not yet understand their value? And what specific actions have you taken to illustrate your commitment to students and family belonging?
So I'm gonna, the example I'm gonna give is the tech services department in Braintree. For a whole variety of reasons, we went from, we had a substantial turnover in the department. When I took over the department, the department was already the most diverse department in the school as far as racial, gender diversity of who you would perhaps typically expect in tech services. And when we had turnover in the department, the manager and I actively sought candidates that would better represent the population of students in the Braintree schools. Because the tech services department is very customer service-based, very client, like client services. We're, we're here to fix your stuff. Let's talk about what's not working. And so then, so, so we were able to hire African-American staff members. We were able to hire bilingual staff members. We were able to actively recruit having women in the department other than just me. And that was a, you know, that, I think that's a powerful thing. A part of my work with the tech department, because I wasn't coming from a technical background, I was coming from an educator background, was how can we have student interns? And part of it was selfish because we needed more hands to fix more Chromebooks. But part of it was providing a real, hands-on educational experience for kids. And so when we first started the program, it was self-selecting. And we would get the exact stereotype model of what you would expect, the male student who's in all AP Computer Science and wants to be an engineer and like, and we would get a few of those and they were, you know, couldn't wait to take stuff apart, put it back together, great. But as we kept the program going, we expanded to actively recruiting students from more diverse backgrounds, including our alternative school, including students who were English learners. And so making sure, again, having the chance to build that department, building a department as inclusive and representative as I could. And then making sure that that department was out making connections with students in the community. Super cool moment, getting to send two gentlemen of color in their 20s to a middle school to fix all the Chromebooks. And a bunch of kids are like, whoa, who are, wait, what? And it was, it was eye-opening for them and built positive relationships. So I get, I don't know if I've thoroughly answered your question at that point.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, I get the fun one about us. So, you know, the school committee, you know, there's some things that are clear between school committee and superintendent. Then there's always ambiguity. What is really a policy, right? In theory, if we oversee policies. So do you have any examples, you know, either, you know, maybe from your assistant or when you were curriculum leader, where there was maybe something unclear, an issue that was unclear between what school committee and kind of, you know, administration was their perspective and roles and responsibilities? And how you or the team addressed kind of that unclearity on roles and responsibilities?
Yeah. So I think the, I agree with you that there are moments of ambiguity. And trying to keep it as focused on operations are something that's generally in the superintendent's realm. And then policy and how that, policy and the interpretation of that policy come from you as the representatives of the community. So you're elected here to represent constituents who have beliefs about what they want from their school system. And you're hiring me and entrusting me that I'll, I'll enact the values and the hopes and the interests of those people. But as those values, hopes, or interests shift, you're the ones who should have kind of a stake and a lead on that. So, so I would hope for the latitude to handle, you know, operations and rules and, you know, that we wouldn't be getting involved in individual decisions about a staff member or a student. That being said, when it's about bigger things, about direction, about what we're doing, about budget, obviously, those are things that are, are well in your purview. And I hope I can answer your questions, explain what you need, and get us somewhere that we feel good about together. Because then that, that, those needs from the community that you're hearing, I'm translating them back into the staff that you've empowered to enact that.
Trust me, I don't wanna get involved in any of those decisions.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Can I, can I ask a follow-up?
Sure.
What, what would happen if our values shift away from your core values?
Yeah. So I would have a very hard time being the, the educational leader in that moment. I, that being said, I don't think I have any core values that are so wildly polarizing that, you know, I'd be like, oh, I'm sorry. I can't imagine a school board that was like, we don't believe in teaching and learning. You know, I feel like we will always find that common ground and that commonality. And I, I think not being quick to jump to that conclusion or make an assumption that, oh, sorry, I guess our beliefs just don't match. We're never going to agree. I would much rather have the conversation about your thought process, the conversation about what you're hoping to see and why you're hoping to see it. And make sure that we're working together towards a solution that can work for both of us. I, I have no interest in being a short timer. I, I like being able to commit to a place and look at the long term and, and, you know, stick it out and make real change that, that is impactful and matters. So, so I guess if it, if we truly were at a values mismatch, it would be very hard for me to continue to lead on your behalf. But I think it's unlikely that we would truly reach that point because I would like to think that we would have the respect and trust to get through a conversation and figure out where our common ground was.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
All right.
Could you tell us who you see as the most critical stakeholders for the public schools in our community?
All of them? Are you looking for a who are the stakeholders or a priority ranking of stakeholders?
Good question. I would just say, you know, kind of, if you could maybe think about just who the, who the critical stakeholders are, you know, relative to, you know, your position.
So, I mean, on one level, it's the students, right? We're literally here to empower them to have the future that they want, need, and deserve. So it's, it's literally the adults of the future, which are the kids that are here. Because they're five or, or even 17, they have parents. And parents certainly would be an important element of understanding how the schools function in the community. It doesn't mean that parents get to make every educational decision for what's happening in the schools. But it does mean that parents who are living here and are sending their kids to public schools should be a part of two-way communication about what's happening in that school, what we can do to better support you, what you can do to better support your child's learning. And then last, I guess I'll say, the, the community as a whole, even those who don't have children in the schools, are, are an important stakeholder in the schools, because the schools are the biggest part of the town budget. The schools are a huge driver of the town's reputation, of people who are coming to the town, economic development in the towns, you know, home sales in the town, all of these things. So I guess maybe the groups that I haven't listed, when I say critical stakeholders there are, I, I didn't talk about school staff in that capacity, because, not because they don't care about our community, and not because their opinion doesn't matter, but because when you say who are the critical stakeholders of schools in a community, the community, to some degree, is choosing the staff that they want to enact what they, their vision of those schools is.
And could you tell us a little bit, you know, what those relationships look like in your current district? And if you were to go to a new district, like Westwood, how would you build line of communications to, you know, municipal leadership and the community as a whole?
Yeah. So in my current district, communication is very focused through the schools. So principals do a great job of weekly communication with families. They, at different levels, use different online systems for doing that. But they understand and respect getting information out to families. The principals are also being creative in how they get feedback back from families, and how post-COVID, we bring families back into the school environment. We had, you know, there are a lot of great things about doing parent conferences on Zoom. Super convenient, especially for those of you who have kids in seven classes, and you don't have to run all over the building getting lost. And it's great to have you in our schools. So one of the elementaries in, in Rockland, for their spring conferences, instead of just doing regular conferences, chose to have Bring Your Parent to School Night. And the kids are coming, and they're bringing their parent, and they're taking their parent through a mini version of their typical school day, which is kind of adorable when you think about it. And a great chance for parents to see what we're actually doing. So as a parent, you would still take away an idea of what your kid is learning and working on, and also the routines and the conversations and the experiences that they're having in their school setting. And in some ways, that could be more valuable than a, you know, ten-minute conference with the teacher. Ask me the second half of the question again?
Sure. If you go to a new district, how would you build a line of communication to the municipal leadership and?
Yep. I knew, I knew the second part was very different. Okay, so the second part is kind of focused on an entry plan and a sustainable entry plan. It's, it's important to me to come into Westwood, having listened to exactly the stakeholders that I just mentioned, in addition to the professionals who are already working here, who know the district, who've already been doing the job. It's important to build those relationships with police and fire, not just for the moment when we have an emergency and we need them, but also because they are the other part of, you know, they're the other unions in town. They're the other parts of the town budget. They're the ones that we have to work together with, not against, to come up with a viable budget for the town. So my entry plan would include determining who, who those key people are. Every town structure is a little bit different, and I would like to think that the members of the school committee and the existing school leadership would be able to help me identify who are the exact people that I should be talking to. But then setting up, reaching out and setting up times to come see them. And my preference is to come see them in their space, because I'm, maybe wrongly, but generally assuming that they know, they've seen, you know, school. And I want to see what, you know, where are they? And so starting with, what's your role? Who is your team? What are your strengths? What is challenging for your team? What are you working on this year? How can I support you in that work? And then how can we best stay in touch? Because that's just the beginning of the conversation. So, so in that respect, I would want to have both in-person and online opportunities, both online synchronous and asynchronous opportunities for family and community members to participate in sharing their thoughts about successes and areas for growth.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Could you share with us your understanding of your current district's budget process? Who they engage, when, and how they communicate at each stage? Sort of how the budget process works from sort of start to finish?
Yes. So a complicating factor of my current district is that they had, Rockland chose to have two assistant superintendents. And so I'm the assistant superintendent that focuses on teaching and learning. The other assistant superintendent actually does finance and operations. So I'm not as deeply involved in that as I actually was in my previous district.
Okay, you're welcome to talk about your previous district.
Thank you, I appreciate that. So, so in Braintree, we, budget policy, the budget process changed over the time that I was a curriculum leader there. And I would like to think that it changed for the better. We initially all created, all the principals and curriculum leaders created their budgets in their office by themselves. It was a Word document with a really nice cover. And you came in and you presented behind closed doors by yourself to the superintendent, assistant superintendent, and business manager, director of finance. And then you left, and then you waited a couple days, and then they came out and said, here's the plan. And that always left people feeling like, why did my stuff get cut? I don't understand. This isn't what we need. So as I moved through various leadership roles, I helped revise the budgeting system, particularly around curriculum, supplies, materials, but also around identifying priority positions for expanding and contracting. Into a more transparent system, you know, technology allows us to have one Google Sheet that we're all working in, and we all put our stuff in. And the formulas can flow, and we can say, this is how much money we estimate is going to be in the pot, based on last year. And I'm not saying take a, you know, fifty-four million dollar budget and have at it. I'm saying, here's how much we think will be, Braintree uses budgetary articles. So here's how much we think will be in this article related to curriculum and professional development. Here's how much we think will be in this article related to salaries. And making the suggestions, looking at what we've got, how far over what we've got are we with those suggestions? How can we prioritize them? And it also allows us to hold on to really good suggestions for next year, so that every year isn't a new like, oh, what are we going to do this time? It's a very systematic, we're making this decision, we, we wish we could spend a million dollars, we have seven hundred and fifty thousand, we're making a decision not to do these things right now, and we're going to keep them on the radar for next year. So Braintree developed a budget in, you know, I would say strongly from the central office, seeking the input of everyone else on the leadership team, because they're the people who are going to know best what's necessary. But then, having the central office broker the conversation between that whole team, not just go behind closed doors and say, well, I don't know, science scores, we should probably get the science books. We don't need the English ones, we're doing fine there. That may not be a full understanding of the situation. And having the, the members of the team actually be part of that conversation, I think is valuable. So are you looking for process with the town as well?
Yeah, sort of the whole, so that's how you get to, you know, your balanced budget, what you want to propose.
Yep.
There's one pot of money.
Yep.
Right? The town needs some, the schools need some. What's the next step?
Yep. So I think it's, I don't think it's the next step. I think it's already a step that was happening parallel with this, which is having a good relationship with your town manager, or town accountant, or whoever, whoever is the person who would be the best person to stay connected with here. And staying connected with what's happening at the state level, with funding that's going to come in there, staying connected with your people personnel, your student services director, about what are some costs related to special ed that might be upcoming, that might be a change. So, parallel to having great conversations about how are we going to use our money to advance teaching and learning, is also knowing that police need a new police station. It's also knowing that the town manager is saying, we have to redo the baseball field, so we're not going to be able to have baseball anymore. So it's, it's being aware of all of that and keeping that in mind. It's, I think it's a parallel conversation happening along with, because I would never want to get to the spot where the schools came out and said, we need all the money. And somebody else said, you know, we need some too. That's, I just don't think that's a good look for a town. And it's not a position I would want to put you all in.
And so how do you reconcile these conversations? Because the budget is a very public process.
Yep.
So how do you reconcile these sort of, you know, you know, these sort of more private conversations with engendering public trust in the budget process?
Right. So part of it is the degree to which we can legally get on the same page before we are in a public setting. And I, I do understand that. I think what the public needs to get out of the budget process is understanding why we're making the choices we're making. So if the public concern is, why didn't you ask for XYZ? It's because, well, we could have, but here are other things that would also benefit the town. And it's not that I won't always advocate for the schools, and it's not that I wouldn't love the entire pot if it were an option, but I, I recognize that it's not. And we, we are not an island. So how do we? I, I guess I would say, having a private conversation doesn't necessarily mean it is not, you can't trust the person who is looking out for your best interests. And the way that I make sure that the community knows I'm doing that is by building that trust before we're in that process.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Please tell us about measures you took in your previous or current district to maintain or enhance student and staff safety. What are your thoughts and experiences with lockdown drills? And what would your response, both short and long-term, be if a student was rumored to have a gun at school?
Okay. So that is not the one that anyone ever wants to consider, but Rockland uses the Alice Safety Protocol. And prior to me getting there, already had administrators and the school resource officer trained in that protocol, and had two people on staff who were ready to be trainers for that. So going into this school year, I'll admit we did not take major steps towards that last year, coming back from the pandemic, still wearing masks. There were a lot of other things going on. Going into this school year, though, I met with the school resource officer and the other trainer, who's also the assistant principal of the high school, all the way back in, like, it had to be March or April, to make sure that we were going to be able to plan a training for the whole district in September. And so we used our September half-day, because in the past, they had sometimes done the training before school even started. But that is just an incredibly painful thing to do, right before the first day of school, at a time when emotions are already running high. So we knew that we had a baseline of what to do, and we had some things already in place, including a mechanism that you can use to jam the door, a piece that stakes into the floor to stop the door. There'd been some theoretical discussion about how you could keep a classroom safer in that setting. So we scheduled our first half-day comparatively early in the year, earlier than we had the previous year, and we trained the whole staff in the high school, because we had specific conversations about you won't always be in your room. And sometimes you need to be flexible about knowing what to do in a specific area. And it created a great opportunity for staff across the grades to have conversations with each other about what safety looks like, what choices they make in their building. At the time, we had five different buildings, we're now moving to only have four. But I was really proud to have created the venue for, so the, the school resource officer and the assistant principal came to me and said, we think we should figure out a way to get everybody trained as soon as possible. And I said, how, how do you want to do that? And we went through like, well, we could go to every school, but then like, we wouldn't get to the last one till December. So I worked with them to create a training for the entire faculty and staff at the same time. And that was a, that was a big lift for two people who were a little bit like, oh, you want us to train how many people at the same time? And it's going to be, and we got, you know, we worked together with the police department, they sent officers over to help and talk through different parts of it. It was a really effective day. And then, we had to figure out how to train the daycare staff and the after-school staff, who were supervising the kids, because we'd had an early release day that day. So we also scheduled a separate training in the new building that we're opening up for them, because it gave the school resource officer and the trainer a chance to try out strategies in the new building before they had to present them to three hundred, four hundred staff members. So I think that's the first half of the question. And then the second half of the question was, students rumored to have a gun. So we unfortunately have been through that situation a few times. I am very much of the, if it's a situation where we can safely intervene and separate the student without causing alarm or creating an opportunity for something dangerous to happen, I feel good about doing that. I think that's our obligation as a school administrator, trying to keep the community safe as a whole. The most recent situation where that happened with me, the question was whether or not the student had guns in the home. And, and we were not in school at the moment, so we'd all gone, gone home already for the day. We talked with the school resource officer, we talked with police, we ended up deciding on a strategy to do a wellness check with police. They did that, and they found that there was actually not a concern, that the student did not have a weapon, but had in fact ordered some protective body armor, not because they intended to do something nefarious, but because they were training for military, and they wanted to feel what it was going to feel like when they had to do the run with all of their gear on. But we had no way of knowing that, so we had to act like there was a threat. So talking through with the administrative team, do we need to remove the student from school immediately? Do, you know, how can we handle this tonight? The kid's not here right now. Do we need to call school for tomorrow? And we didn't need to do any of those things, because we were able to work with law enforcement, go to the home, talk with the student, and resolve the situation that night. But we did work through what would be our steps, and when do we need to make an uncomfortable call like that? And all I can say in the moment is, the priority would always be the safety of the, the student community in general. So. Thanks.
Thank you. The, the Westwood School District has historically received high marks from ranking organizations. I don't think anybody buys a home in Westwood at ninety percent of education. We hear about it quite a bit in the school committee. The, what do you think makes Westwood that good? And how would you help to get us from good to great?
That is a very cool question. So I think Westwood is uniquely positioned geographically and economically to have high-performing families already here. And also, those are, families that have had past privilege and high performance and great academic success, with, you know, college degrees and, and well-paying jobs, are not the only families that are here. And even families who have had past success, sometimes more difficult things happen in, in future generations. So part of the success is historical success. Part of the success is, is, you know, the, the basis of the town of Westwood. But an ongoing element of that success is families who want the best opportunities for their kids, choosing to be here, choosing to stick with public schools. Educators who want to provide the best they can for kids, choosing to be here, and choosing to push themselves and push the students in their class to achieve and attain. What I think takes us from good to great is a little bit of what I talked about at the beginning, as far as recognizing places where we can work smarter, not harder, recognizing places where we can better engage students in learning, rather than just filling them up with enough knowledge to pass the AP test, which is awesome, but doesn't necessarily make you an amazing contributor to the Westwood community as an adult. Did I get the whole thing, or is there a second half that I missed?
Would like to have you ask us any questions that you may have.
Oh, well, today has been amazing. I have learned so much about the town. I could research all day long online, and it's not the same as getting to be here in person and actually talk with people, see the kids, see the facilities. So the question I've asked all day, and almost all of you have heard me ask it already, is what are your hopes and needs from the person in this position? what are your hopes and needs from the person in this position? So that question still stands. And also, I would ask each of you, what, what is your driving force? I mean, this is, school committee is a huge commitment and can be a thankless job, especially in a contentious time. So what is your driving force in, in wanting to be in, in your role, wanting to be here, doing what you do?
Who wants to take that?
You're looking at me?
I was looking at Amanda.
So it, what was the first part of your question? I got the second part, that was clear.
First part was what are your hopes and needs for the person who's coming into this role?
Oh, okay. So my, I mean, I think it would be ideal if the person coming on board could really hit the ground running. You know, we've had phenomenal leadership for all these years and we're looking for somebody who can just keep the momentum going.
Yep.
And I think, you know, that's also why I'm really excited to be in the role I'm in as part of the school committee, is this amazing momentum kind of post-COVID in this recovery phase where we've gotten a lot of important work done and there's still so much to do and there are so many need initiatives and endeavors that really, I think, could better the lives of the students, but also like the community at large.
Yep.
So it's an exciting time to, to be on the school committee for sure.
Great, thank you.
We recently had an analysis done on the, studied on the schools that lost the most education during the pandemic, you know, who lost in test scores and things like that. What we found out was, uh, Westwood ranked among the third or fourth best community out of 150, not having lost much. And so when we asked, what do you think happened to that too? She said, teachers. You know, we were very proud of the teachers that we have and what the commitment they have and what they do.
Yeah.
So, and so number one is, we want to maintain the support we have for our teachers, be sure they're happy and they're very innovative with ideas. About five years ago, we had a project where the teacher said, the last week of school is kind of boring, it's hot, the grades are in, we're just sitting around.
Yes.
Why don't we do something new where kids take one course every day for a week? And so I think we have 40 courses offered right now.
Yeah.
How to get your scuba diver license, how to climb the Three Mountains of Illinois. Just, that was a teacher's idea. So they're very imaginative, creative people.
Yes.
So we're always looking for ideas of doing something innovative or creative with a lot of people wanting to come behind it, with the ideas coming from the teachers, school committee. We have a lot of citizens offering us ideas. So for our own interest, can we get things a little bit better? So sometimes we have a new idea and we have to deal with it and can we afford it and who's going to support it? So I think there's that opportunity to, you know, have a very rich environment with ideas being circulated from our citizens, our teachers and our kids.
Yeah.
We do have a, a student on our school committee.
Yes.
You met her.
You met her.
We did. She runs the, the, and two of us, Dore and I, sit on the student council, or the legislative council. We sit there asking for ideas and they, many ideas, but we did have an issue with complaining of wearing masks. Don't tell me and my kid. So we asked our student representative and what she said to us, she says, we, we want to wear masks because we're not going to get affected, but we are friends with parents and grandparents of the house.
Yeah.
We don't want to affect them.
Yeah.
So suddenly we're getting great advice from, so there's a, an opportunity to reach out and encourage them to tell us. So I think that's just a, a wonderful opportunity to see new ideas develop, flourish, not kind of four-doll them all of the time, but to proceed and do that. So I think that's something I think that we're happy with here and looking for somebody to come in and to pick up and run these things, like, you know, it's not the right time to do this or how do we try this? So, but there's plenty of ideas always bubbling up. The students, the teachers, the school committee and the town, could we try doing something like this? So that's what's fun about it.
Yeah.
How we prepare the kids to be better.
That's great. That, that is what I heard from teachers today. And one teacher explicitly asked a question about like, would you support us as we kind of go out on a limb and try something new? And the smile on my face, it was just, before he was even done the question, I was like, yes, I clearly would. I'm excited for what you're talking about.
We do, you know, one of the things we feel that our kids are here with a wonderful school system, but we're not as diverse as if they're living in Dorchester or with, you know. So our concern is that they go out into the world, meeting a wide variety of people that they didn't grow up with. And how can we, you know, make up for that? Or, you know, we have a great Medco program, we're very proud of that, we've expanded it. But I think that that's always a challenge of how do we make our system better, what, for things we can't do.
I think another, for another thing that I think we'd be looking for is really a great communicator. I think the current administration has, has really perfected, well, we get it wrong sometimes, right? We always will. But for the most part, I think we are really striving for transparency, we're striving for communication and that's really something I think that's important to the school committee. I would also say in terms of being on the committee, you know, why we would be doing this, I will say it's very humbling to be on the school committee. I think that it still strikes me as odd that, you know, these five people, none of whom are educators, are running the, the system. And I still don't know if it makes sense, but here we are. So I think that for us, you know, there's, there's good, there's bad things clearly, like we've, I think, especially all of us have gone through COVID and other issues. But at the end of the day, the same reason we're doing this is the same reason you're doing it, right? For the kids and because we believe in the system and we believe in the, in the district. And so you put up with all of the hard stuff because you go to the school play or you go to the football game or you go to a classroom and, and you, that's when you're like, this is why we're doing it.
Absolutely.
You know? So, I don't know. One of my thoughts.
Yeah, I mean, I, you and I have had a lot of time to talk today, so I know we've, we've sort of discussed a few of these things before, but I guess for me personally, in terms of why, kind of what motivates me to kind of continue doing this, I think because I find that I have more passion for doing this than almost anything else in my life at this point and I really hope my boss isn't listening when I say that. But truly, this is what I love to do. I have my master's in education, but I'm like really thankful for the people who are taking that degree and actually using it in the classroom because it wasn't something that, you know, I found that I was able to do on a day-to-day basis. But I want to support the people who are doing that and the children in that classroom.
Yeah.
And so I think that's what really fuels, fuels it for me, fills my bucket.
Do you have any comments?
I haven't touched spoken. Um, I mean, I think we've spoken with superintendent as far as the second part of the question, it's certainly not the big bucks we made. And having been on, I guess, seven, you know, between, you know, COVID and that. But I would say, I guess, a couple things. I think we have an amazing team. So joking aside, I don't get involved in vertical and horizontal alignment and what that means completely.
Yeah.
Completely, I don't know anything about it. Well, you know, I know a little bit, but not expert. So we have a great team, so we can, fortunately, we don't have to get, you know, that can lead all that. But I think it's really, it's a chance to really connect the community, you know, bring a perspective, you know, you know, impact, you know, we talked about start times and there's been a lot of things. You know, when I first ran seven years ago, you know, I ran because I was pissed off, which people know me, I'm a little emotional because basically there was a, there was a $40 million budget and the only, the only new position they questioned, the school committee questioned was a social worker to help with mental health issues in the high school. And so, yeah, so I reacted to that. So that just means it tends to make an impact and also influence and actually get, raise visibility to things, but also to support really to, and ultimately, you know, it's a team, it's not, it shouldn't be, you know, us versus them. Obviously, it's, we're supporting you, superintendent, you, collective you, this team, because that's, it's not a healthy relationship, you know, if it's adversarial, so. And that's, I guess, enjoys well, that we have a great principals, teachers, administration right now. So it's, it's actually in some ways easy, easy, and easy of these mask issues aside. It has, you know, that, that piece is an issue.
Mask aside.
Yeah, mask aside.
That's the, yeah.
That's easy, so.
Yeah. I, I really hear what you're saying about the importance of communication and that's definitely something that's a priority for me. I can, I, I can't help with situations that I don't know about. And, and I know that the same is true for, for our school committee. And so having that, having that communication channel open between us is, is very important.
Great.
Any other?
Any other questions from you?
No, that was it for me, so.
Well, Rebecca, thanks so much for being with us today and all the answers to our questions and really appreciate your efforts and coming.
Thanks.
I'd like to thank Conley and Mayor for getting us organized and our other committee members meeting and having dinner and all. And thank you for this, bringing us all together for this process, so thank you again.
Thank you, I really appreciate your hosting me.
Should I have a motion to adjourn our meeting?
Someone.
Second?
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Hallie, for all your help. Close our meeting tonight, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.